All right, I have nine o'clock.
Hi.
Good morning and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you would please stand for our flag, scoot and remain standing for a moment. It will be led this morning by Supervisor Mike Ennis.
Please join me in saluting our great American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Again, this morning with our Board of Supervisors matters and I'll begin with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you Supervisor, or Chairman Worthley, I appreciate it. Couple of things I wanted to go over, last week I had the opportunity to attend a presentation by Dr., I believe it's Jerry Merrill, Dr. Merrill regarding the Merrill Water Bond that was hosted at the Tulare County Farm Bureau office. And it was a very thorough presentation and I thought it was very well done. And one of the things that I think is worth highlighting in that, you know, a lot of people may say, "Well, with the water year that we had last year, we don't need to really talk anymore about water bonds or water infrastructure, but as we're seeing this year, droughts can come right back." So, I think that the great part about this bond, there's, it's a statewide bond that has a little bit of something for everybody, but the San Joaquin Valley, Central Valley would actually benefit by about fifty percent of the funds, I think, a little over fifty percent. So, very significant impact for the valley. I think it's very important that we put all efforts that we can behind it to make sure that it does pass. Also, that week, last Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday, I attended an event that was commemorating one year of a, actually, he was president of the AMVETS of the United States at one point, his name's Jim Pigeon from Tulare. He celebrated one year of doing twenty-two push-ups a day, every day for the last year. And what that signifies is he did one push-up for every veteran that commits suicide on average in a given day in our country. And I think it's a really sad state of affairs when the people who have served our country so that we can all live here free are coming back and committing suicide in those, at that rate and in those numbers. So, I appreciate the awareness that he has been trying to spread and I hope that everybody else in any means they can can also help spread that awareness. Last week I had a marathon trip down to Southern California for some due diligence for a couple of investment firms that the Retirement Board is looking at investing a hundred million dollars with in the international equity space. Those meetings were very thorough, but, and great firms, I think, either way that we end up going, but those were two of the three, the other is in Connecticut, so LA was much better than Connecticut, but two back-to-back, three-hour meetings in downtown LA were very difficult, so, but it was, it was well worth the trip. This week we have a strategic planning, or space planning ad hoc committee meeting at three o'clock. We might need to change the name of the committee because I don't know how much we're going to be talking about space, we might be dealing with space a little bit this week, but that is at three o'clock. This weekend, the Farm Bureau has their annual scholarship fundraiser, that's going to be Saturday at seven-thirty at the Convention Center. The Greater Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency has a meeting Monday at one o'clock in Farmersville, and then the Water Commission will be meeting here at three o'clock next week. Those are a few things I wanted to highlight, thank you Mr. Worthley.
Thank you. Supervisor Suckman, I see you've got your fan going.
I do, I'm a big fan, it's, I'm at that age. Yeah, on the twenty-second and twenty-third of March, I was in Sacramento on the twenty-second, excuse me, attending a CSAC Institute on Housing. Jason was there also, Chaz from HHSA, it was very interesting. I think anytime you talk about affordable housing, it goes hand-in-hand with the homelessness, so the conversations went back and forth. It's interesting to hear how other counties are dealing with the situation of the lack of affordable housing and the need to maybe do, you know, take a look at tweaking some zoning issues and permitting issues and things like that, so stuff that I think we can use in the future. On the twenty-third, I attended, I'm a board member now for the Institute of Local Government, and they are the ones who prepared the homeless report for CSAC and League of California Cities, and we had a very interesting conversation regarding that report and all. I also attended the groundwater presentation, and I gotta flip my calendar to this week. As most of you know, and we're going to be giving a resolution, but I want to mention that this is Healthy Tulare County Week, and there are a lot of activities going on. There are the daily themes, yesterday was behavioral health, today is communicable diseases, so I hope you all washed your hands and be sure to use your sanitizer. Wednesday is environmental health, Thursday injury and violence prevention, and Friday is ensuring the right to health. So, a lot of good activities going on as far as that. And let me see here, what else do we have? I have a dentist appointment tomorrow. Hey, why didn't you show up? Why didn't you sneak in? Have you been there the whole time?
The record will reflect Supervisor Crocker joining the guy.
I just didn't see you.
I wasn't standing.
Oh, okay, you're standing now. And then Friday night, I will be attending the Habitat for Humanity Bird House Auction, an annual thing that they do, and this year, yeah, we did a video for it.
I forgot to mention that.
You gonna be there?
Thank you, I'm gonna try.
Okay. And this year it's kinda cool, they're gonna be doing dog houses also, so birdhouses and doghouses.
That's why you're going.
No, I go every year, so, anyway, I guess that's about it, thank you.
Going to the dogs, okay Supervisor Crocker.
Well, I, thank you, it's okay to be here. I won't rehash some of the events that are coming up that I'll also be attending that were mentioned by my colleagues, but I will mention, last week, in addition to the November Water Bond presentation that the Farm Bureau hosted, there was also the annual Friant Water Authority Meeting in Fresno that I attended. The topic of discussion was the, as a region, the San Joaquin Valley, they anticipate that a million and a half acres will go out of production if there is no change in the situation. If everything's status quo with the capacity of surface water that we have and with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, when it's fully implemented, that would result in about a million and a half acre of lost production for the San Joaquin Valley. That's not specific for our county, it's not specific for certain irrigation districts, that's just kind of a generalized look, and so they went through the various implementation measures to try and reduce that amount, Temperance Flat being one of them, fixing subsidence issues on the Friant Kern Canal, which I think we'll discuss a little bit on our federal policies later this morning, and coordinating with other agencies as far as having water flexibility as well as just getting some regulatory reform. I think that that's probably the highest hurdle to work on regulatory reform, but nonetheless they listed that as a possibility. So, even with everything that was listed, there was still going to be shortfall in the hundreds of thousands of acres that would still have to go out of production, so their point is there's no silver bullet and that there's going to be, there's going to be dramatic impacts for everyone in the San Joaquin Valley regardless of whether you are a farmer or you have some ancillary business that supports that, or if you are government that is, has a vested interest in the taxable income that comes from those farms. So, that was a fun evening, and then the only other thing that I want to highlight is next week I will miss the meeting, I will be attending, or I'll be traveling to Washington DC with TCAG as part of our regular trip, will be advocating farm-to-market routes, will be creating some type of pilot program either via the Farm Bill or some other mechanism as well as the regional transportation plan. We've been pushing hard to extend that timeline from a four-year planning cycle to a ten-year planning cycle, so that'll allow our staff to be able to focus more on some of our rural communities rather than just in planning process, actually get into implementation. Those are kind of our two highlights that we've been working on, there's a aviation sales tax that also has a little loophole that needs some fixing, but those are kind of the main things that we're, that we're looking at advocating on behalf of Tulare County.
Thank you Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll have a long stay in DC.
Yes.
You'll be back there for our trip back.
That's where I'm just gonna stay.
So, yeah, so that's a good deal. Well, yesterday I had my Lower Tulie meeting down at Lower Tulie Irrigation on spillway enlargement project, continues to move forward. We're still finding a difference between what the project was initially programmed to be in 2003 and what it is here now in 2018, and the discrepancy is from thirty thousand, which it was in 2003, they've got it scoped all the way up, it could be as much as fifty-eight, fifty-eight million dollars, I'm talking million, not thousands. But anyway, some of the things that they're still looking at is the spillway problem, they think we might have a spillway problem below the dam and the channel below the dam by putting in an extra wall, they think that might help deter that. I don't know why, when water starts going down and it goes over the spillway and you put up another wall down there, and once it goes over that wall, it's on its own. So, I mean, I don't know what they're thinking about. We had that flood where it went over the spillway in nineteen sixty-six, and it did what it did, and it worked fine, so, I don't know, we're still trying to determine what we're gonna do there. But we've gotta somehow stay in bounds though of how much it's gonna cost because of all stockholders that, irrigation districts and the farmers that have money involved in Lake Success. So, we are at the DSAC III, which we need to be, we know that's going forward, but we're still in the deliberation, we're trying to get this thing on the President's budget where it could somehow get financed in 2020 and then move forward and probably go to construction in 2022 with a completion date of 2024. So, we're still quite a ways out, but it's moving. I had a real experience yesterday, I had to go to DMV and renew my license because I wanted to get a real license, what they call a real license.
They gave him a different color ID because he's old.
I had an appointment, and it still took me over an hour. By the time I got in, went through all the different things you gotta do, go around, take the test, take the eye test, and I did get a hundred percent on my test, thanks to my little wife who had the little pre-test for me at the house.
Oh, I thought she was standing next to you giving you the answers.
No, 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 anyway, those things work, so if you're gonna have to go take a driver's test, those pre-tests will really well fill you in because some of the answers that I did give, I really didn't agree with, but that's what DMV, that's what DMV wants.
Like the speed limit? The speed limit wants.
And one of the questions was, if the driver in front of you keeps falling back into you, you should back off further from him? No, 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 I go around him, one way or the other, I'm past him, down the road. But I didn't put that on there.
Now, the basic speed law might be a problem for you.
Anyway, if you haven't been to DMV in a while, it is a real experience. I knew I was in trouble when there was fifty people outside that couldn't even get inside, so, anyway, it was a zoo, but anyway, I got that done and hopefully I'll be able to fly on an airplane now and use my driver's license and not have to have a passport.
Yeah, well, that's what he's referring to, if you don't understand that, what's coming up is the, your license, if you're renewing it, if you just go through the simple process, they'll give you a driver's license, but you will not be able to use that to get on an airplane. So, Mike's point is a good public announcement that people need to be aware of.
And you gotta have your birth certificate, your original social security card, a tax statement from where you live or a residence with bills where you live, physically live, all this stuff has to go through. And in my wife's case, she had to go get a marriage license because your name's changed. Well, yeah, it's changed, I'm married, but anyway, those are the things, those are the things you gotta go through, so I just wanted to tell you early on, it's not a pleasant experience, anyway.
Well, that's what you can do in your retirement, you can do PSAs for the DMV, Mike.
So, anyway, on a good note, Milstow, Mayor of Porterville, received a new heart on Sunday.
Oh, great, that's great. Okay, thank you, thank you Mike. I didn't want to take up our whole meeting today with our Supervisor Matters, but we've had some things going on. Last week, a subcommittee of the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority Board met with Senator Feinstein, who was here in Visalia on a fundraising expedition, and gave her the presentation. We also had our consultant there, engineer, who's been on this project for over a decade working for the Bureau of Reclamation, and she was very positive, responded very positively to the process and to the project and seemed very supportive of it. We had some specific asks for her to assist, and she was very willing to help us with that in terms of arranging some meetings back in Washington DC, and so I thought it was a very good meeting. The following day, we met in, another group of people met in Sacramento at the Board of Reclamation, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Reclamation, to talk about our memorandum of understanding. We have an MOU, that is, the JPA has MOU with the Bureau, and there's discussions about bringing on the investor group that is still in formation as making them also a part of that memorandum of understanding, because we know at some point, once we get our allocation, hopefully from the Water Commission for the construction of Temperance Flat, a major part of this project is going to be driven by those who will actually be investing in the private money, they'll be investing in the project, and so there'll be some sort of transition, or I envision perhaps it may be easier just to modify the makeup of the JPA Board or whatever, but it'll have to include the investors who'll become the driving force at that point. Anyway, so that was the meeting we had in Sacramento. This week, I will be traveling to Sacramento on Wednesday evening for a meeting on the following day with the Executive Committee of CSAC. Our primary responsibility that day will be to hire a new executive officer for the, for CSAC, which is, doesn't happen all that often, is a major event. Matt Kate has been with us for the last few years, done a very good job of turning the organization around and I think put us on a very solid footing, so I look forward to getting that accomplished. Unfortunately, I will be missing an event in my district in London, which is a Health and Resource Fair, which will be Thursday evening, and that will be at the Hodges Community Center and also at our public library there, and they're anticipating about three hundred people being there, so that's a great event for that community. I think that's all I have to report today, and so we will move on to our next item, which is the presentation of a proclamation to adopt the week of April eighth to the fourteenth as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Chief Norman's gonna come up and say a few words about that, and then I'll present the resolution to, proclamation rather, at the end of that.
Good morning all. Is this on, guys ready?
Yeah, you're on.
Testing.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity to speak, I just want to recognize all the good work that our dispatch center does. In 2017, our FireCom, our Communication Center dispatched over twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. As Dispatch Center, they serve as the Regional Five OP area, which means we coordinate all resources within this area on any wildland strike team incidents or any type of large-scale disaster. This past year, we've had the pier fire, which took regional resources as well as resources throughout the state, and we also had some insignificant local incidents with the February storm event of 2017, the King Incident, and again, the pier fire. And we had multiple large-scale incidents, Hawk Fire in the South County, so they have been extremely busy. This group plays an important part in telecommunications and making sure we have resources, there are so many times we'll have simultaneous multi-alarm incidents throughout the county, and keeping track of resources, the multitasking that they do in this very, very stressful environment is, they perform such a great service for the county as well as keeping all the citizens and firefighters safe. So, I'd like to call for Chief Marquez and our Dispatch Supervisor Gloria Samos, and I want to thank them for all their hard work in making this happen.
You've been here long enough, Charlie. All right, and I would like to read this proclamation because I think it kind of sets forth really how dispatchers fit into the entire emergency realm and how important they are. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical service, whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the various Tulare County dispatch centers, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatchers provide the most vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas the public safety dispatchers of Tulare County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in declaring the week of April eighth to April fourteenth, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Tulare County, signed Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shuckley, and Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. This is an action item, before you leave, this is, we need to adopt the res- proclamation, so.
And I would make the motion that we approve the Declaration of National Public Safety.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, please cast your votes, votes are unanimous. Now, as Amy's making her way down to the well, we will now present a proclamation to recognize the week of April second through the eighth as Healthy Tulare County Week, and as Supervisor Shuckley serves on our Health Board as our public member, I've asked her to please present the proclamation. Before she does that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's kinda jumping the gun, she's very anxious here this morning.
I know, that's pretty.
But before she does that, we would like to hear from the Health and Services Agency folks.
Good morning, thank you.
Cheryl.
Thank you, Chairman Worthley, board members, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, I'm Karen Elliott, I'm the Public Health Director. I like Supervisor Shuckley's enthusiasm, and I appreciate both of you commenting already on Healthy Tulare County Week, which began yesterday. We do this annually in coordination with National Public Health Week, and we have a calendar of activities that the community will be hosting, that we've provided handouts to all of you so that you can see them, they can also be referenced on our website. This year, we worked closely with our Health Advisory Committee in determining how to do something special for the week. We reached out to four separate communities and landed with New London, who was able to coordinate a health fair this week during the week of Healthy Tulare County Week. We have three other communities that we did work with, Ridge Grove, Strathmore, and Alpa. Ridge Grove and Strathmore will be having something later in the month, and we will have health programs attending those. Alpa, just based on the timing and Easter, it was difficult for them to coordinate anything, but next year, what we'd like to do, because we again recognize the access to services is tough for them, and that's what we were trying to concentrate on, we will work with them to see if we can do something maybe during next year's for your district there. So, we're really excited about the health fair, I do have the flyer, I don't know if you can put the flyer up. It is going to be Thursday from three to six in New London, I'm gonna get, make sure I give the credit to Proteus Citizens for Better London, Kings River School, along with the library. They, as Supervisor Worthley had commented, we're hoping to have three hundred participants there. Food Link will be there earlier in the day for food distribution, and we're hoping to, we've been working with the daycare center, with just everybody who's a huge advocate for that area, to come together to get people, as many people as possible. We've had donations from Anthem Blue Cross, Walmart gave a lot of raffle ticket-type items, we're gonna put some of those aside actually also for the other health fairs that are later in the month, but we're really excited to be offering this to that community. I do want to recognize Supervisor Shuckley, who is our Chairperson of our Health Advisory Committee, she is pending op-ed, we're hoping that is going to be placed in the Visalia Times Delta this week sometime. Dr. Haught, who is our Health Officer, is also here, she is the Vice Chairperson of the Health Advisory Committee and always hugely an impact in terms of determining what we do for this week. And now Supervisor Shuckley, and I'm going to invite up, yes, I'm going to invite up Candace Hillvers, who is our Community Representative on our Health Advisory Committee, and Nilsa Gonzalez, who's our Environmental Representative.
If I'd have read the memo before, it said Karen Elliott will make brief remarks, but I didn't have it before. Anyway, thank you very much Karen, and I will, I will be there in London. Come closer, yes, all right, not that close, Nilsa. Well, thank you, thank you for being here. Whereas, strong public health systems are critical for sustaining and improving communities' health and promoting public health in what we do to assure the conditions for people to be healthy. And whereas preventable chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes are responsible for millions of premature deaths in the United States each year, and whereas focusing on improved access to mental and behavioral health services encourages people with mental illness to seek treatment. And whereas emerging and existing communicable diseases such as HIV/AIDS, tuberculosis, influenza, hepatitis, syphilis, gonorrhea, and whooping cough can threaten the lives and well-being of residents. And whereas protecting our natural resources and using evidence-based policy to protect our air, water, and food, supporting environmental health efforts that monitor our communities for risks and developing health-promoting interventions benefits the entire community. And whereas encouraging programs that reduce and prevent community violence, advocating for occupational health and safety, and supporting policies that save those struggling with addiction contribute to the overall well-being of all residents of Tulare County. And whereas advocating for health equity means that everyone deserves an opportunity to live a life free from preventable disease and disability. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare the week of April second through eighth to be Healthy Tulare County Week to coincide with National Public Health Week. The Board calls upon residents, public and private institutions, community organizations, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of the detriments of good health and to make a small change toward better health for all. And this is signed by me and the guys behind me, thank you gentlemen. So, and serving the last year or so on the Health Advisory Committee has been, you know, I've always pretty much considered myself pretty aware of health and wellness, but it's really opened my eyes to a lot of other things. I appreciate the commitment by you and the other board members, we have some very interesting and educational conversations between folks, it's certainly not a passive group of people on the Health Advisory Committee, which I think that's what's needed. So, thank you all, thank you Nilsa for your work and all of the staff that have a part in making sure, yeah, we're gonna get a picture, so, where do you want us?
Do you want us scared or out?
Yeah, come over here.
Okay.
Come over here, we're gonna.
Do you want to? Yeah.
Make sure we give you every opportunity.
I want to close this for the next person.
All right, thank you, thank you everybody for being here today. This time we'll take up our public comment period, anyone wishing to address the board. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion.
Yes, I believe it is. Move approval.
Motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel, please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Now we'll take up our public comment period, anyone wishing to address the Board of Matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are invited to come forward this time and give us public comment. Then Noah, we will close the public comment, bring it back now to the consent calendar. There's nothing I've been advised that needs to come off unless members want to handle or deal with something separately.
Nothing, I would move for approval of consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and by Supervisor Ennis. We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. I did want to point out that, for information only, that we had opened the bid results of the water system improvements for Yedam and Seville. We have that item coming up later on, our untimed item on another matter. But it's really good news because it came well under the engineer's estimate, which will mean we'll be able to do some of the addendum items, including additional storage and so forth, which will be really helpful for that community, so. And this will replace a system that's over a century old and has really been the cause and consternation of the people living there and for the county in terms of trying to operate a system which has been plugged so many times. Anyway, moving on now to our, we can go to our public hearing matter since it's after 9:30, and a request from the Board of Supervisors to approve the resolution of application for the formation of the Yedam-Seville Community Services District. Good morning, Denise.
The public hearing matter before you this morning is the...
Denise, you grab your microphone.
Oh, sorry. There you go. Is that better?
I'm hard of hearing in my old age now.
This feels kind of tall, like Dawn might have been standing here, too. So, this matter before you is the first step in creating a new community services districts for the communities of Yedam and Seville. As Supervisor Worthley mentioned, the Phase 1 of a construction project to provide a joint water system between the two communities. We have received bids back, and that construction is slated to start this summer. And so the goal is to create a self-governing system, governance structure for the two communities for their water service. At this time, the services that would be activated through LAFCO would be just the water service, and then at a later date, the sewer service could also be transferred over to the new CSD once it's formed. And so Self-Help Enterprises has been tasked from the State Water Board, Division of Drinking Water, to prepare the LAFCO application. However, your board has the authority to do the resolution authorizing that application and get it over to LAFCO. The goal is to get it on LAFCO's May agenda, and then that would start the process to get it on the ballot for the residents of these two communities in November. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and it is a public hearing.
Right. Are there any questions, board members, this time?
One quick question. What is the expectation for sewer being included within the CSD's services?
It would, it would just, the expectation is for that to go as well. I know it was your board's desire to do both. Because of the timing to get the CSD formation on the November ballot, and because Self-Help was only tasked for the water side, because it was the drinking water program providing the funding for that, we, they, we were only able to do the water side. However, it's as simple, as I understand it from Ben Giuliani over at LAFCO, it's as simple as going to LAFCO and activating the sewer power, and then there would be an agreement between the county and the new CSD to, to transfer that over.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this, on this matter, this time, is welcome to come forward to the public hearing. Seeing Noah, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. I just want to compliment staff on bringing this forward. I know it's been kind of a difficult thing to get here. But I also want to comment that, you know, there was a little bit of, I think, a misstatement in our staff report that we were ordered by the state of California to take over the Seville system. We were actually invited to do that. The board took affirmative steps to do that, and it was for a temporary... How long many years has it been now, Denise?
That was 2009, so we are nine years.
So, I'm thinking it's seven, eight, so eight years ago. Nothing more temporary, nothing more permanent than a temporary government program. We'll talk a little bit more about something like that in a little bit. But at the same time, one of the constant, one of the concerns the board had then was, well, once we take this over, how do we ever get released from it, right? And, and then there's been a concern about the Yedam system, which we do own, again, and the difficulties we've had as a county with dealing with the whole process of the operations and collections and all that sort of thing. And so we really have an opportunity here to accomplish two things, if you will, and that is take the Yedam system, which has been under our purview, if you will, for the last eight years, and the Yedam system, which we own, combine them together under a local government, you know, their own community services district represented by the people who live in those communities, and remove it from the county of Tulare. So, this is a very, I think, a very positive step in many ways. So, I just, I just wanted to comment on the historic, preservative nature of this. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
And usually I don't ever try to add on to Supervisor Worthley's historical reflections, but, you know, I remember in, in my mind, as I had just got on the Board of Supervisors, long lines of public comment, basically advocating for the board to take this action and become a receiver of this temporary program. And the board did that. We took on a risk as a county to help benefit this community, and so it has been a long time coming. I'm very happy to be here, and I, I think that it always shows, people only show up when they're upset, and those long lines of public comment aren't here to support the action that's being taken today. But I think it's a very valuable step and should serve as a model for other systems in this county to consolidate, to take the power closer to the people in the form of a community services district. And I hope that we can help more of these types of projects happen in the future, so. Very supportive, and I think this will serve the community very well, and look forward to turning over the sewer services to them as well.
So entertain a motion. Should I move for approval? Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes.
Whoops. I can't make up my mind. How's that?
That looks like unanimous, yes. All right. Thank you all, and thank you, Denise. And thanks for all the hard work that I know Self-Help and our, our MA folks have done. Okay. We will now move to our untimed items, and Item 19 is receiving a presentation from Health and Human Services Agency regarding the status of Self-Help Enterprises' water tank program and the status of local water system construction projects and provide direction regarding the county's response to unincorporated residents' unmet water needs. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Chairman Worthley, members of the board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, HSA Director. I've asked Andrew Lockman, OES manager, to join me to help me with some of the questions today. But today we basically want to bring to you a brief update about the drought that we've been experiencing, and more specifically, an update about the, the tank program that we transitioned to Self-Help last summer. So, I don't want to belabor the history, but sort of we've been dealing with some of these drought conditions since 2014. And in 2017, the governor ended drought conditions for all but three counties, and one of them was Tulare County, and also reduced and terminated most of the relief programs that we had been providing at that time, specifically in East Porterville and some of the other more intense services that we were providing. They did allow, they, we do have a report on the water systems. East Porterville has been finished as of February, although there may be some pending connections. Monson is also pending some additional connections. Oakville has, is anticipated early 2019, and we also continue to work on some connections. We'll get into the data here in just a moment. But this is all setting the context for sort of the, what's happening with the tank program as of June 30th. The tank program, if you recall, in July of 2017, we transferred about 435 participants. And part of that agreement with Self-Help and part of the additional funding that the state was providing was to really engage individuals into finding a permanent solution. And so as of early February 2018, sort of as the time of putting this together, we had about 155 participants still on the program, and it does end this June. Again, we've had, we've had, Health Help has had a lot of success in helping individuals get to a, a private solution. We have about 101 individuals who have secured funding and well drillers. So, out of that 155, we have 101 that are sort of in the process, expected to be completed by, by June. We have eight that are sort of still in the process, and then we still have about nine. We have those 18 and 19 counts are the connections that are expected for the Monson, Oakville, East Porterville areas, but those are going to come after June of 2018. And then we have about nine individuals that we've identified through Self-Help's assistance that really just have no means whatsoever to, to move to another, to a private solution. So, pretty good success. We've gotten down from 435 to really what's going to be about nine. And so, wanted to update the board on that and let you know where that's, where that was heading. As part of the looking forward process and part of what Self-Help's sort of agreement with us was, was to continue working with the legislature to attempt to secure additional funding, to extend the tank program, particularly around those that are, got connections expected but may not come until early next year or, or after the June 30th date. So, that's kind of what we're working with now and trying to explore other opportunities to figure out how we could deal with interim water deliveries during that time. So, still continuing to work. We would be remiss if we did not mention that we are starting to see some new impacts, even though 2017 was a very wet year. We are at 50% of normal for this year. And we do know that we're starting to receive about 15 dry well, well reports over the last few months, and we're hoping not to see a similar pattern, similar to 2013 and 14, but we are sort of bracing for, for that. Still, there's still some mitigating differences where we still have, there is a little bit more allocation on the Frye, Frye Valley Water Project, and we did have a good 2017, but as, as I've noted, 2018 was not the best. This is just a chart, kind of going back to 2014, that just kind of shows the history of dry, dry well reports, at least that was known to the Office of Emergency Services. I'm sure there were many others that we didn't hear about. And then as part of the funding that's going to conclude with Self-Help in June, one of the questions that the state would like for us to answer is to kind of give a plan for individuals who are still on tanks and not moving to private solutions or still waiting for the connections, and how we may be able to provide assistance to some of those homeowners. I don't think this is something that is sort of, we have to do. They're just sort of trying to gather statistics and information, but that's part of our presentation today, is kind of get input from the board about if, what you would like for us to explore, or maybe we'll talk about some options later on about how to assist these folks as a, as a bridge, and then what sort of actions should OES be taking if we start seeing more dry well reports similar to 2013 and 2014. So, a few options we've talked about is allowing the homeowners to keep the tanks and to continue working with RMA to perhaps extend the time for some of, they waive some of the building permit and some of the codes around those tanks, and allow them to keep them until they get connected or for another time. We could always assume operation or funding of water deliveries until the gap with permanent solutions are terminated and completed, or providing, of course, direct assistance to those with financial hardships. So, just a few options that we laid out there for the board. And today, our request really is just to receive a presentation of an update and to provide direction to OES regarding the county's response to unincorporated residents' unmet water needs. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Jason, where are these nine individuals located? Are they in areas that are close to a system, or are these just individuals that are out in the middle of nowhere and have no financial means to seek a permanent solution?
They're, they're not in one specific area. They're just throughout the county. They're not close to any water source. They're just on their own wells and just have no, no way financially or through even some of Self-Help's programs, whether that be loan fundings or certain funds to drill a deeper well or to a new well.
And so these nine individuals currently have a tank and were, prior to the tank, had wells that obviously went dry. And so these tanks have been providing them water for, throughout the drought, as long as we've had...
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks. A question I had, as I recall, the ownership of the tanks is with Self-Help Enterprises at this time. So, the one request was an option of allowing the county to give some leeway in terms of code enforcement and so forth as far as keeping the tanks in place. I, I know that up until now, if I'm not mistaken, water has been provided to these people at no charge to them all during this time. Is that correct? Right?
That's correct.
You're nodding your head. I want to make sure you say it audibly.
That's correct, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
They've had free water all this time.
Correct.
So, one, because I didn't see it as an option there, but one of them would be to allow the tanks to remain, if Self-Help is willing to do that, and we're willing to give them a pass on, on code enforcement, and for people to provide their own water supply. That, is that an option?
That is correct. That is an option.
Then we looked at what the cost of that might be.
For the private homeowner, sir, it could be potentially $500 to $600 a month. Depends on location, amount used, frequency of deliveries, and so on, number of folks in the household.
Five or $600 a month?
Five to $600 a month, yes, sir. It's usually $125 to $200 per delivery of water. The, the tanks are either being filled weekly or bi-weekly.
Tanks hold how much?
Depends on the, the size of the, the family that's living in the household. It was either 1,500 to 3,000 gallon tanks.
But one of the options could be that we could allow them to, you know, as you said, purchase their own water and just allow them to keep the tank as long as we, you know, for a, a certain period of time.
Well, I'm wondering, too, if like, what if there were two tanks? I mean, so if you, because I'm sure a big part of the expense is actually the transportation cost of getting water out there. If they had two tanks on their property and then they only had to have delivery perhaps once a month or, or twice a month, that could reduce the cost considerably, I would think. I guess my, and I'll let my other member speak, but, you know, nothing is free in this world. I mean, we have some of the poorest people in our county pay some of the highest water rates. I mean, they've been paying it all through the system. Now, granted, they've had a way of getting water, but they're, they've been paying, and I think at some point, people need to be, have some skin in the game, because as long as people can provide you something for free, then...
You don't even have an incentive to get a permanent solution.
You don't really have an incentive to, to get a solution. And I, you know, I mean, because there are, there are solutions. I mean, you, you bite the bullet, then you hire somebody to, to, to put in a well, and you could finance that over time. Or you sell your property to somebody else who can do that, and you move someplace else. But I just think that at some point, people have to step up and be responsible to pay, have some skin in the game to get this moved along, and I'm very happy that we've made such great progress. I don't mean to be, I mean, we've done, it's really an exceptional job. But I mean, like you were pointing out, there's 15 wells that have gone bad. Wells fail for many reasons over time. Every, I was looking at your chart, even before we had the drought, you show well, well failures. That happens. They, they wear out, they collapse, the water tables continue to drop in different situations. But it's never been the county's responsibility or government's responsibility to go out there and drill wells for people or provide them with water. I mean, that's, that's, that's incumbent upon living in the country. When you move out in the country, that's, that's your responsibility. So, I, I, just speaking for myself, and the other members will maybe want to join in, but I think we need to come up with some strategy, which is, maybe there's some assistance to them. And again, if we, I mean, I have no problems with if they want to ask the state to continue on with limited duration or whatever. That's up to the state. But as far as the county just stepping up and putting out all the money, I really have a little bit of difficulty with that personally.
Wasn't it a part of every tank agreement that you had to be, you had to show some evidence of seeking a permanent solution? And these nine were just allowed to continue on even though they weren't seeking solution? Or did they try and just realize that it was financially unfeasible? And how long were they on? I mean, I, I agree with Steve. You know, if, if every homeowner in Tulare County had the opportunity to get free water provided by the county, I think we'd probably have a lot more tanks out there. And, you know, there's a lot of homeowners that don't have that option, don't get that assistance. I would be willing to do something with getting them, and I'm sure we have extra tanks in our inventory somewhere, but getting extra tanks... our inventory somewhere, but getting extra tanks put on their property so that we can help keep the cost down. But like you said, Steve, at some point, you know, they might even have to sell their property and look for somewhere that can have a more permanent water solution. I, you know, but it's all about being a transition from where they were to that permanent solution. But we can't just continue to do it forever, because that bucket is bottomless.
No, I think, I think the nine, yes, are the most difficult. The other 37, between the city and county where they live, we, they are pending connections to community water systems, but the connections are not going to be there until after June 30th.
I think every situation's a little bit different. I think that's one. But you also raised some of the points about Munson, I think you said, where there's some pending connections. Well, the system is in, so I'm not, and the connections were free, so I'm not sure what's pending. I don't know. I mean, I think you almost have to look at each one perhaps and say, well, this is why that's the case, and there may be good and valid reasons for it. But, I mean, I think we really have to look at each individual situation and evaluate that.
I would, I would agree with my colleagues on this, and of course, I've been a proponent of this for years, since this thing started. Your responsibility, if you live in the country, you have your own well, it's your responsibility to maintain it and to see that it's working condition. So, $500 or $600 a month to buy the water, I mean, it's a whole lot cheaper to drill a well or get your well fixed than it is to buy water. So, it behooves these people to move forward with a plan to get something done. I think there's plenty of well drillers out there, and in many cases, they can just use the same casing and go a little deeper. But I agree with you. There needs to be some skin in the game, and people need to take some responsibility upon themselves if that's where they want to live.
Yep, I have a few. I point out that the Frye Division of the Central Valley Project, it's at a 60% allocation, and it, hopefully it will increase, it seems like, especially if we get another good Pineapple Express this weekend. The, I would just echo all the comments of May. I think those, the additional tank is a very creative solution that I think can help reduce costs and make it maybe a little easier, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we, as a county, have to do so much from a financial standpoint. That may require some staff time, but I, but I think that's reasonable. As far as legislative solution, I'm not exactly sure what Self Help is thinking about that, but, you know, we, as a county, have supported legislative solutions in the trailer bill that was formerly SB 623. And that has some opportunity for some of these systems. It has, it's much broader, I think, than just this, but there are implications that this type of situation could be alleviated through funding, as well as the November water bond. And so, I don't want to hurt those two efforts. I think those two efforts have the possibility of helping these type of situations, but they, they also have greater benefit that go far beyond just this situation. So, I don't want to muddy the waters in Sacramento to show that, that those aren't needed if we have some other type of relief. So, I think that the efforts need to be on those two initiatives, or initiative and piece of legislation to try and get those moving forward.
And that was my thought, too. I thought about the AB 623 and maybe the opportunity there. You know, Jason, we were, I was talking about the affordable housing thing, and this is, this fits in with that. You know, a lot of folks, they just, they can't afford to live in a home anymore with things like this happening. So, hopefully, we can find a solution, maybe not just with the county, putting more money into it, but maybe state programs and whatnot.
Mr. Chair, I'd be curious if Self Help wants...
Yeah, I want to make sure, anybody, when the audience wish to address this morning, please feel free to come forward this time and perhaps use the microphone over on your, on this side, since it's open. Good morning. Please give us your name and address.
Good morning. Susan Long with Self Help Enterprises here in Visalia. I just wanted to kind of echo, I understand your point, and I do agree with you. It is a homeowner's responsibility in a lot of these situations. These families are working on a permanent solution. It has just taken additional time. To kind of comment on the additional tank, there are no existing additional tanks remaining. All the tanks that were removed, we had to dispose of, so those are no longer available. We are working with, to get additional funds for this program, state well throughout the valley. We've asked for 3.5 million, and it is currently in the budget, in the general fund budget at the state level. The issue that we're up against really is just time. It takes a lot of time to process these, takes time for drillers to be able to get out and get them drilled. You know, we have great rain, which we need, but it sets us back, because then the drillers can't get their rigs out into the fields to drill, or temporary amount of time.
Wait, just a sec. I can't let that go. I have, just around my house, I have witnessed two drill, welling drills.
Not everywhere. You're right. It's not everywhere. It's just in some areas where it depends on the soil type and stuff, that there are some areas that that causes, there is a setback there. It's not everywhere. I should clarify that. But different things like that just set us back. It's not for a lack of effort. It really is, I think, most of these families, as you could see from the report, have legitimately been seeking a permanent solution. But in areas like Porterville and Oakville, where they're doing a whole system connection, you know, that's taking time, and it is in process, and it's going to happen. But we're, you know, anywhere from six to eight months out, and those projects being completed, so these families are still going to be without water during that time.
Just a question on the Porterville connections. Is that a separate neighborhood or area outside of East Porterville? Or is that still part of East Porterville that's being connected?
Is that, Jesse, is that part of the East Porterville?
No, it's entirely separate.
It's the other one. Yes, it's, right, okay. That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. It's the, inside the city limits, there were a number of homes in the city limits that were still on private wells that now are in process. I think it's about 22 homes currently in that.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I know, one of the things that I did not hear from our staff was, because as was pointed out, part of the deal was, they were supposed to make, to get obligated, if you will, to get on a list, to get their wells drilled. So, you're telling me that people are in that process, that of the nine?
The nine folks specifically, I'm not sure what this is, I don't know what nine those are, so it's hard for me to speak to that. Do you have any?
And that's why my comment about, I think you almost have to look at each one, come on up, Andrew. You have to look at each one of these situations to really evaluate each one.
And that's why...
And even if there are no extra tanks, which, by the way, what a waste if you had to dispose of them. There was nothing wrong with it. The tanks were perfectly fine, were they not?
They were. They were resold at auction, and the funds had to go back to the state of California.
Oh, I see.
They weren't totally destroyed, but there was no storage, you know, there was a lot of tanks and nowhere to really store them all, and the cost of storage was something that we couldn't bear either.
Somebody bought those tanks, who'd probably be glad they resold them for a fraction of what they cost new, I suspect, but, okay.
The nine individuals in question are those that have had a financial hardship that are financially unable to drill the well on their own and have not been able to qualify for any of Self Help's programs. I'm working with your colleague, Mr. Mendez, to source that information.
Were they over income? Okay. So, they were households that are over income and don't qualify for the funding that we currently have available, is the situation, and they have been unable to secure other financing. We have been trying to work with families in that situation through a new program that we have to see if refinancing is an option for them, to see if we can get them in a position that they can get funding. And I'm not sure exactly where they are, maybe in that process, but everyone else besides the nine is in some form of a process of getting a new water source.
Another question. So, you had mentioned that the governor's budget has some funding to continue the program, possibly if that, if that gets approved. So, if, assuming that that was approved, there may be a bit of a, of an issue for a few months in between the end of June and whenever those funds are released?
Correct.
What, do we know what's anticipated? If it's two, three months longer?
At this point, we do not. We've been pushing, but, you know...
But it, quite possibly, it's a, it's a temporary hardship for those individuals, not, yeah.
Well, another question I would have about that is, is there, do we have an idea that, since it's in the budget, is there the potential of reimbursing the county? So, if the county advances money to keep the program going, is there, are we anticipating that we could be repaid from, out of our general fund for the monies that we spend?
I don't know that that question has been asked. I do know in previous, you know, last year when we went back for money, there was a big push for the counties to have a financial piece in the puzzle, so I'm not sure.
Well, we had a substantial piece in this puzzle.
Yes, you have. I'm not denying that.
We put out a lot of money that was not covered by the state and a lot of staff time, so the county has stepped up significantly throughout this entire process.
Right, right. I just don't know that that question has been asked, or if it's even in, at this point. I think that it's a sentiment we would want to push for.
We have a little time, and we were bringing this today for our, for direction. I think, I think, Jason, you kind of sense where the board wants to go. We're not, we're open to suggestions. If there's a potential of getting funding and reimbursement for the county, if we have to advance some funds, I think that's something that we would be, we would consider. I do think, even if the tanks have been, are no longer, quote, available, they're available somewhere, or there are other tanks that are available, and at the price of that kind of cost for water, pretty quickly, you pay for a tank. So, if that's what, what needs to be done, that's another thing to look at. I don't think the county is in a position or of a mindset to just start delivering water to people out of our checkbook without some other way of dealing with it. And maybe it's, maybe it's a partial payment by the people, but I just think they need to have some skin in the game and get this thing moving forward. I mean, and I realize that, I'm not saying that they haven't made efforts, but I was just looking, if you paid $50 a month for water, which a lot of our people do, for 48 months, you know, that's $2,400 worth of water that you've been given for free. And if you, and I know this is wishful thinking, but if people set money aside, that they would otherwise be paying for, to have that water, they would have that money to go towards building, putting a new well in. So, I, I just think we have to move this process along, and it's a little, may seem a little bit like we don't care. We do care, it's just that we have to, we have to draw a line here somewhere.
Chairman, so the 100-plus individuals that have a private well solution, when those solutions are complete, when the, when they have new wells or new connections, whatever the situation is, those tanks that they have currently will then go through that surplus process, or will they, do we have an opportunity to reallocate? I mean, rather than purchase, I mean, at some point in time, in the next three months, those are supposed to be complete, correct? Those were the, the 100-plus were the ones that are going to be complete by June 30th, right?
For residents that complete a permanent solution, they are given the option to keep the tank if they desire to do so for additional water storage. They have to sign off on a hold harmless agreement. So, there are some residents that don't want to keep them, so at that point, we do remove them. They go to the auction house to be sold. If, if something is kind of decided with the state or something, that we could somehow continue this program, and maybe we could find some storage, you know, maybe within the county like we used to have, maybe we could kind of stock those and just kind of make it mandatory to remove all the tanks regardless, you know? That way, as people need them, or the nine are, there's, there could be some tanks available to then put in place.
Well, I wasn't thinking necessarily storage, but you just, for the remaining individuals still have them, you just place them on those homes that already have a tank, you just place it there, so, yeah. But I think that should be pursued, if we need some authorization from the state to, whether it's an allowable use, you know, I think there's multiple options we can pursue.
Absolutely.
Sir, can you come back and state your name for the record?
David Mendez, Self Help Enterprises.
Thank you, yes.
If I may? Jesse Snyder, also from Self Help Enterprises. A couple of folks mentioned what was formerly known as SB 623, which is now in the budget as a trailer bill to set up the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund. And I just wanted to speak to that for a moment and say that what the bill will do is set up a fund where water systems will begin collecting contributions from their customers to build up a fund. It's not going to be instantly available money. It'll take a couple of years to be built up and implemented. So, when we're looking at the next, you know, 12 months of this emergency situation that remains, the Safe and Affordable Drinking Fund will not be helpful to any of these folks. Thank you.
Finally, I just want to thank Self Help for their help and support through this...
Oh, yes, we do want to thank Self Help. They've been very helpful throughout this entire process.
And I think we've got some good information here, and we'll take this back and explore the multiple avenues voiced here today, and we'll come back and give you a final update.
Before the deadline?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, so, at this time, we move to item 20, and this is a request from General Services Agency to open, examine, and declare sealed proposals for the development of property, a portion of the real property identified as a sister parcel number 087-460-007, located 800 South Acre Street in Visalia, referred to as Tulare Acres North Parking Lot.
Yes, that's right. Good morning. So, this is a, an item to open up these boxes here that we have sitting at the clerk's desk, which are proposals for the parking lot development at Acres. This was noticed back in December. The, one note I'd like to make is, we initially had three acres available. It has been reduced to two and a quarter as a result of available parking on site. So, with that, the government code requires that we open them up this morning, and as well, after that opening, we also have the opportunity to call for oral bids, which have to be 5% higher than the highest sealed bid. So, with that, after the reading today, Supervisors Crocker and Shucklian will work with staff to review these proposals and bring back a recommendation for a final document to approve at that time.
Very good. So, now it goes to me to open the envelopes and announce what's contained there. So, the reason we have boxes, there's actually binders of proposals, but we've kept those from the other members until such time as I've been able to do this.
And these were due yesterday at 5:00, and we received two, as it appears.
Two?
Yes, two. Electronic thumb drive to a, a little more, a little more compact than the binder.
What's the issue?
There's nothing in the envelope except a piece, a device that connects to a computer.
Perhaps open the binder.
So, I'm going to look inside the, here, and so, the, the project name, of course, I've already stated, the lead developer name is, this is from Catus Properties LLC. The proposed use is to develop a mixed-use concept with approximately 11,000 square feet of retail and 11,500 square feet of office space. The retail will be constructed along Acres, so to allow the visibility along the busy street for the retailers, office building will be developed in the rear, and site will be pedestrian-friendly to create a walkable development. The ground lease price per square foot, it's 46 cents per square foot, and annual ground rent of $45,000. That is that one. And I'm going to just stick this back inside the envelope.
I'm glad they sealed that.
Plug it into the wood.
Maybe recognize who's there. Funny person.
Another thumb drive?
Another thumb drive.
That's great.
Another thumb drive device, which will remain in the envelope. Can I open the packet? And so, the lead developer here is Harvey May, Paloma Development Company Incorporated. The use of the property proposed is to commons at Acres Plaza, represents the opportunity for a walkable enhancement of services and food for the surrounding professional and residential neighborhood. This infill project will improve and enhance a currently underlived utilized parcel, while also enhancing county's income stream through an unfettered ground lease payment. while also enhancing county's income stream through an unfettered ground lease payment. The ground lease payment price is seventy-six cents per square foot, annual payment of seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
Okay, so with that, those are the two sealed bids that we received and government code requires opening for.
So now I will open it up. If anybody wished, here today wishes to make an oral bid, uh, this is the time and place to do so. Again, it must be five percent over the, uh, larger, which was seventy-six cents per square foot. Are there any, is anyone here today to make an oral bid? Seeing none, uh, we will now turn this back over to John to meet with the subcommittee to come back with a formal recommendation back to this board for action.
Yes.
Very good. Any comments, questions, or statements by anyone?
No.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
There's some reading to do.
Thank you. Uh, now we have a request from the board supervisor staff to receive input and provide direction regarding the two thousand eighteen federal legislative priorities. Good morning, Julieta.
Good morning, Board.
Martinez.
CAO Council and Ms. Clerk. I am here to give you a brief presentation on federal priorities that I would like you to discuss, select, and/or possibly rank for the upcoming trip to Washington DC. The Board takes an annual advocacy trip back to Wa, Washington and we will be traveling the week of April sixteenth. So before you is a document that was prepared and submitted by staff a week prior to this meeting, published online, um, for any members of the public that wanted to review it beforehand. So I will go through this document with you. Please feel free to stop me should you have any questions in between or at the end of this presentation. Um, the first two, I will go, um, payment in lieu of taxes and state criminal alien assistance programs, both items that we have had on a yearly basis for a couple of years now. Payment, payment in lieu of taxes are federal payments to local governments. They help offset losses in property taxes due to non-taxable federal lands within their boundaries. We have been a recipient of this for the past couple of years, receiving three million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred in two thousand seventeen for over one point five million acres. Currently, there is full programmatic funding for fiscal year twenty eighteen, four hundred sixty-five million. Um, we tend to keep this item on our federal priority list as it is not promised every year. It's something that is advocated for by many local government agencies and throughout the US. So the fiscal year, um, twenty nineteen projection should be out soon, but has not been released, so we look forward to that number. Um, state criminal alien assistance program SCAP is also something that we had advocated for. Since twenty-ten, it has decreased sixty-five percent. Again, the county was a recipient, but not enough to cover the costs we incur following these type of programs. We received a total of five hundred fifty-two thousand in two thousand sixteen, which was four percent of the actual costs we incurred. Um, we are always seeking reauthorization of this full funding. A brief update, fiscal year twenty seventeen SCAP funding application was delayed. The new application deadline has been set by the Department of Justice for Wednesday, April eleventh, twenty eighteen. Staff does work with our, um, federal lobbyists to submit our own appropriations requests for SCAP and PILT and that goes through our local congressmen's offices. Success Reservoir Enlargement Project, we did receive a brief update from Supervisor Mike Ennis, who sits on that, I think it's TriJPA. Um, advancing well, have been supporting it for many years. It is a project we would like to see end very soon, um, successfully. And so there is, there was, it was selected to receive funding to address additional costs needed to account for mitigation for upstream and downstream effects and incorporation of design changes from recent failure events. Um, funding will be in the next Water Resources Development Act Bill. Um, we've had a lot of local agencies work together with us, with the county, and we thank Supervisor Ennis for sitting on that JPA to move forward. This board itself has met in previous years with the Army Corps of Engineers to advocate for their assistance. I believe they are the ones that helped us push this funding forward. We are not done and continue to ask for support, funding in our legislation to continue work with community partners and the Army Corps to raise the success dam spillway. Water supply recharge projects, we also mentioned the Temperance Flat Dam Project and other water resource supply projects. As you know, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority was established by the Counties of Merced, Madera, Fresno, Kings, and Tulare, forming to seek, promote, arrange, and compete for grants and other fundings for water infrastructure projects, benefiting the San Joaquin Valley constituents. Recently, the House passed fiscal year eighteen bill, which includes funding for California water storage projects as requested by the US Department of Interior. Temperance Flat was listed to receive one point five million to complete the long pending feasibility study that we have worked on with the Bureau of Reclamation. We are still under review with the California Water Commission, hoping to see what allocation we might receive. However, this process, um, is still gonna be a little lengthy. We are still seeking funding. We are still working towards construction and any advocacy efforts by this county, other counties, members of that JPA, and other local agencies is very much appreciated. Active Forest Management is a topic that we've advocated in the state and federal government and we're not gonna see go away anytime soon. We have discussed what the effects of the drought did to us and we've discussed potential drought returning to us, which we hope doesn't. Um, in twenty fifteen, Governor Brown did declare an emergency declaration on tree mortality. This county has worked tires, tirelessly and had Supervisor Worthley serve on the state task force to address these issues and what we can do. We have spent a lot of local funding trying to clear trees, as have other agencies. To date, a hundred twenty-nine million dead or dying trees have been found within eighteen California counties and estimated twenty-nine million dead or dying trees in Tulare County alone. I believe when we first, um, got our first aerial detected, detection survey with the U, United States Forest Service, we were at eight point one million, so this is a significant jump in the past year or two alone. Um, to note, California does have dozens of agencies attacking the tree mortality issue. We just can't keep up with it. Crews have been busy clearing trees, um, as fast as funding allows. Our crews being one of them. Uh, it's estimated that CalFire has been removing trees on a fewer than forty thousand acres a year, falling very short of their half a million acre goal. Just gives you an idea of how big this problem is. The following, um, three items that are on your document are actually in collaboration with our Tulare County Association of Governments. Supervisor Crocker will be attending their annual advocacy trip a week prior to ours, assisting in the advocacy of TCAG, um, something that all our supervisors are a member of. And so the first and foremost, which has been on here annually, is farm-to-market routes in support of dairy industry and other major ag industries here in the county. Um, and so the dairy industry is a major part of the economy of Tulare County and provides five percent of all milk consumed in the US. According to Caltrans, Caltrans, a fully loaded dairy truck can weigh up to eighty thousand pounds. Roadways carrying five hundred trucks a day would be impacted the same as if five million passenger cars have traveled the same roads. We would like to assist TCAG in pursuing the development of a farm-to-market strategy for prioritization that can be duplicated or used as a basis for a new program. So we ask that we continue to advocate for special funding for rural roads that are used by dairies or daily farm-to-market shipping through a set aside and a possible transportation or farm bill. The next two initiatives were actually something new, um, in discussing with Tulare County Association of Government Staff, infrastructure initiatives. They're part of the new infrastructure initiatives, um, released by our president earlier this year and one is connecting to local match. The new White House infrastructure proposal seeks to fund major infrastructure projects through a combination of new federal funding, non-federal funding, and newly prioritized and expedited projects. However, it is unclear if existing sales tax measures can be used to match federal funding. We would like to work to allow already approved sales tax measures to be eligible as a match for the federal funding under the new infrastructure initiative. Continuing with that goal is the definition of rural. This new proposal also seeks to fund major projects, um, with a percentage of funding slated to go to rural areas of a certain population. This definition of rural under consideration would say a county is not rural if there exists a metropolitan area in the county. This would immediately eliminate Tulare County from any funding, funding considerations. We request to include rural portions of counties that have urban areas under the definition of rural by carving out the metropolitan areas and classifying the remaining section as rural. The last item, um, which we also touched base on to date is subsidence in the Fryant Current Canal. This has been brought up, um, by some of our supervisors throughout this year and at the end of last year, subsidence along the canal is a result of increased groundwater pumping for a couple of years now. It came as a response to reduce and curtail surface water deliveries by the Bureau of Reclamation during a period from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen. I believe the canal capacity, um, was seventeen fifteen cubic feet per second and it must have already dropped, but I'll look for clarification later, um, down from a design capacity of four thousand cubic fees, cubic feet per second. Long-term repairs to the canal system could cost upwards of three hundred fifty million in the next couple of years. This includes bridge work that could be affected in Tulare County. Um, there is a new water bond under consideration, the State of California, that could potentially contribute to the repairs, but long-term fixes cannot happen without both state and federal funding. We are trying to collaborate, share information, and work with other local agencies, other districts. Um, but it's just a project that we, our advocacy efforts could help us in the future as well as residents in the Central Valley. So we request to support legislation and funding appropriations to address the issue of subsidence along the Fryant Current Canal and its effect on five potential Tulare County bridges. With that, that is a quick summary of the document before you and I ask you to please note any suggested changes or amendments and if there's any items you feel should take priority while we are scheduling our meetings back in Washington.
Uh, one thing I was gonna comment on the active forest management, um, uh, one thing it wasn't maybe explicit there, but I, I, I think part of what we're looking at is future-oriented and that is that, um, we have a problem, it's gonna take care of itself, whether it's either gonna burn down or fall down. But the question is really, are we going to actively manage our forest lands into the future? Do we want to have forests in the future or do we want to have brushfields? And this is, there's more time to really develop this concept. I know it's, uh, I know it's being bannered about, but I mean, we need to promote active forest management on all of our public lands, uh, and that will have so many benefits in terms of healthy forests, more water, higher water quality, uh, there just, there's just a lot of, a myriad of positives that come out of that. But, but that's a longer-term strategy. We've seen the federal government at work when it comes to working on emergencies, they don't. I mean, in this situation, they have fallen down terribly in terms of dealing with an emergency with dead trees. The ability to move merchantable timber out has proven to be negligible. All this time, we've been struggling to get them to, you know, to look at releasing timber out of the country so it could be sold and they haven't yet to move on that. And yeah, here we are, four years out, down the way and most of the trees are no longer merchantable. But, but we, we do have time to work on the longer-term strategy of active forest management for future generations to enjoy a forest in the national parks and lands.
I was just gonna say, you know, I, I don't know that, uh, we should necessarily rank these because I think that in various, uh, meetings with different, uh, congressional officials, i- it seems like they almost rank themselves. Certain, uh, members are more interested in, in certain issues and can actually have an effect on them. Um, so I think we can just go with the conversations as they, uh, as they evolve. But, um, I, one of the things I think we really need to, uh, pay attention to and heighten in terms of priority, uh, is if the infrastructure bill does advance in Congress and the definition of rural is not amended, we could be completely left out of that portion of funding. Um, a- and, and it really is important to identify and remind, uh, the federal government that there are rural areas that happen to have a Visalia in them, uh, and, and what can be considered a metropolitan area. Uh, but, you know, you, you drive out to Allensworth and Alpon, tell me that's not rural. Um, you know, I, that, that's, I can't imagine any definition that would not make them, uh, rural. So, uh, we, we need to make sure that there are, uh, uh, exceptions and, and that definition is not too narrow. Um, you know, I, I do think that the farm-to-market route is an important one to, uh, reiterate from the board perspective. I think the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And, uh, if you look at the conversation surrounding the farm bill, uh, right now, back in DC, I think with TCAG going back and, uh, maybe they'll even remember Crocker's face because he's gonna be meeting with him the week before. Uh, but we should be reiterating that and hopefully, uh, uh, getting that, uh, inclusion in those bills. So, you know, those are just a few thoughts that I.
Well, I don't disagree with that, uh, your comments, other than the fact to say that if we were to have a meeting, let's say with Senator Feinstein, I know I've been there many times and the first words out of her mouth are, what is your number one or what is your number two or three top priorities?
Yeah.
That's, that's gonna be her request. And I would have to say, uh, water, infrastructure is number one because we don't need farm-to-market roads if we don't have any farms.
I, I, I completely agree if we are gonna prioritize.
We, we gotta have water if we're gonna stay in the farming business, so I, I think that's gotta be our number one priority. But, but I agree with the, the concept that as we meet with different members or different agencies, there, there, a lot of times these things kind of speak for themselves. You know, when you're in front of the Forest Service, you know, you wanna, you wanna talk about forest mortality and active management, that, that just follows. Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, on the success dam, uh, I don't think it's necessary that we meet CORE back there. Uh, Congressman McCarthy has been the spark on that and, of course, we can just discuss with him, but the CORE is on board with us now. The CORE is, is working with us. We just gotta get through this financial deal and, and, uh, I think that's the point that we need to tell Congressman McCarthy and, uh, Kyle Lombardi is that, hey, we need help with the formula that's being put together to get this project, uh, put in construction. So that's kind of where we are there. I think CORE is on board. We don't need to meet with the CORE back there, but I think Congressman McCarthy is the, uh, the main person in there. Anybody else?
Yeah. Uh, I, I would, uh, agree, uh, with, with, uh, many of the comments that were made at the, I think the, you know, it, it's important to be relative and, and relevant when, uh, when we go back. And so I, you know, the, the, the president, uh, is interested in an infrastructure package, so I think what Supervisor Vanderpoel said, you know, that, that should be, you know, maybe it's not a priority, but it's our theme. I think that should kind of be the theme. And we, we list, you know, the water, uh, infrastructure, uh, issues, um, as priorities for us as well as, uh, the regulatory definition, uh, issues. Just on the, on the rural definition, there is not one San Joaquin Valley County that, that qualifies for rural under the current definition, so it's beyond even a city like Visalia. It's a city of Hanford or Madera that also excludes them from a, from a rural definition. So it's, um, it goes much beyond, uh, just, just us as far as that goes. And that's my car going off. That always happens. That's right. It's gonna go through it.
You should be so lucky.
He's got the Forrest Steele sign in the back.
That's right. I would love it. I got great insurance. Um, so I think those are, those are issues that, that we want to highlight. Um, active forest management, absolutely, and, and what Supervisor Worthley said. Um, and I think if there was one key priority, uh, that's gotta be Temperance Flat. I mean, we're gonna need a lot of help from the feds. You know, the, what the state is going to do with, uh, Proposition One is gonna be great, but we're gonna need a lot of help from the feds as well. And that's gonna be a very heavy lift. Um, and, you know, I don't know, I think it would be very positive to make sure that our, you know, local congressional delegation understand that. We are very supportive of that. I know that in the past, there's been an ongoing conversation, but I think it's good just to remind them. I don't, I don't think we've, we've spoken with them regarding that in particular in the recent past. So, um, doing those, you know, covering the water projects, you know, as far as Fryant Current Canal, um, I think that the emphasis is, is it's act, it's a federal project. It's a federal issue. The fact that there is, uh, funding possibly from a state water bond, uh, that, that will still need to get approval by the voters, which is no easy task, uh, that, that's really, um, a benefit to the feds, but, but really they should be paying for that issue. Um, it, it's, it really shouldn't be from the State of California. I'll, I'll take the money from wherever I can, but I mean, we're, you know, Delano Early Mart, uh, irrigation district, they're, you know, if, if there isn't a fix on that canal, they're, you know, they're basically gonna cease to exist 'cause they'll have no other way to get water to their system. Um, so the, the southern irrigation districts of our county, those are the ones that are really impacted by us, by this, uh, subsidence where their, water isn't able to flow to those areas. So, um, those are kind of my thoughts, but, uh, I, I, I think we've got a, a good theme as far as infrastructure and encouraging Congress. That's, you know, I know the administration's very encouraged by that, but I don't know, I, I don't get the sense that Congress is so supportive. So if, if we lend our ear that we have good. So if, if we lend our ear that we have good projects, we've managed good projects in the past, and we're, and we're ready to go with, with future projects if they authorize that.
All right. Any other comments? I think those were all good comments. Or does anybody from the public wish to make comments this morning about this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. And do you have direction?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 22 is a request from the county.
Chairman. Since this is the official platform that you would like on action.
Should we take action? Okay. Any motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Crocker. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And now, we'll go to item 22. Request from the county administrative office to approve the resolution adopting the public agency's post-employment benefits Internal Revenue Code Section 115 trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The matter before you today is to consider approving a proposed Internal Revenue Code Section 115 trust to be administered by the Public Agency Retirement Services, otherwise known as PARs. In terms of background briefly, the Strategic Finance Ad Hoc Committee during 2017 held a number of committee meetings, during which time they were looking at various retirement financing options. And one of those options was to consider establishing a trust, an investment trust, whereby there would be capital contributions made by the county from which there would be an investment and a return, which would, both principal and interest would then be able to assist in the payment of pension obligations. In 2018, in February, this Board provided direction to this office to take the steps necessary to establish and fund an Internal Revenue Code Section 115 trust. That is essentially the matter before you today. PARs would be the firm to which we would look to handle the trust administration. PARs is a very well-qualified and experienced trust administration firm in this area, and they represent numerous cities and counties with regard to how to address the funding obligations of pensions. The trust administrator would be the Tulare County Auditor Controller. Future distributions would be paid for pension obligations. The, the obligation decisions would be at discretion of the Board of Supervisors, and the payments would be to TESERA. In terms of the initial or startup financing, three million dollars from the Pension Stabilization Fund 593 would be utilized in order to provide that funding. Trust administration fees would be approximately fifteen thousand annually. With that background in mind, the requested action is twofold. One, to approve the resolution, attachment A made apart hereof, adopting the public agency's post-employment benefits Internal Revenue Code Section 115 trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs. And two, to authorize the auditor controller to transfer three million from the Pension Stabilization Trust Fund 593 to PARs for the Section 115 trust fund program to be invested in the PARs conservative model investment portfolio. That concludes my presentation, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, that Mitch Barker, the distinguished representative from PARs, is in the audience who may want to provide a brief word.
Thank you. Good morning, Mitch. How are you?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff, Michael especially, thank you so much for inviting us back. It's been a journey, and I will tell you, no other county or agency has thoroughly vetted pension pre-funding like Tulare County. So I want to congratulate you for that, because I think you've turned over every rock to try and figure out what's the best course of action for this county. One hundred and thirty-five agencies have adopted our pension rate stabilization program to date, including eleven counties. You will be the first thirty-seven at county. I am promising you, you are setting the pathway forward for the other ones. They've been looking, they've been considering. We are looking forward to telling others that Tulare County moved forward, because anyone that has pension, anyone has a discount rate that's being lowered or considering lowering, is having this issue to deal with. So I think it's a very positive step forward. We look forward to working with you to address this issue on a go-forward basis, and I'm available for any questions here if you need me.
Are any questions? Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Mitch, a couple of questions that I would just have for you. What is, I know of the hundred-plus agencies, they're all different sizes and shapes, everything else, but what, what's a typical amount that agencies are, are contributing? Is it, do you find that it's being done on a regular basis? Is it, you know, a one-time injection, and then they just kind of leave it there and hope the returns are great? Just maybe give me a little overview of the, the landscape there.
Yeah. Largest county contribution was nineteen million by Solano County. They, they had it, and they were eager to get going, and actually, were the first agency to adopt it, the one hundred and thirty-five. On the smaller side, I think the, the smallest to date's been five hundred thousand. So that's the range. What's typical has been in the three to five million dollar category. So you're right there.
And what do fees look like as dollar amounts increase or the time passes?
There's a price breaks at every five million dollar level. So as the assets grow, the fees go down.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, we, it's not really a question, but I'm, I'm ready to move forward with, with this proposal. But one thing that we talked about in, in the committee and even at the last meeting where we reviewed retirement options, including this, is that we were always, the, the direction we were leaning towards was the moderately conservative model, and it has conservative model. So I would move to approve the actions going forward with the moderately conservative model of investment portfolio.
Okay. So any other public? Any public comment on this matter?
I can add one comment to that. We have five risk tolerance levels. That's number two, working up the risk tolerance scale. Moderately conservative has been the most common choice of the hundred and thirty-five adopting agencies.
Very good. So there's no public comment? Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You say it has been a journey. We're starting to conclude some of them. So thank you very much. We have items for closed session, Council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A, C, D, and H are off calendar. Items B, E, F, and G will be heard in closed session, and I do expect an announcement out.
Very well. Thank you for being here today. Have a great afternoon.